Good evening, Chair. Calls order, public hearing for Bill 22-004 Appropriations Special Pays. Counsel, this evening we have Mr. Robbie Sanlis with us, Harford County Treasurer. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Robbie Sanlis, County Treasurer. On behalf of county executive, I'm asking for a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $3 million to the Personnel Matters Sections of both the General and the Highways Funds. This is to cover employee separation payouts largely for retirements. The amounts are 2.6 million additional for the General Fund and 400,000 for the Highways Fund for that total of 3 million. We have been coming to the council the past several years with this legislation, in large part because in the late 80s and 90s, the county was growing by a large amount and hiring new employees, and a lot of those employees are now have reached retirement eligibility. And then with that, that is where we are having them to make these payments for their annual leave, their sick leave, things along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. Sanlis. Counsel, any questions? Robbie, any idea how many employees we're anticipating this year?
I do have a list here. Most of them have already given their notice. I don't have the exact count. I can say that of the amount, about two-thirds are with the Sheriff's Office. And then when you include the sheriffs and the state's attorney and the judicial, they comprise about 80% total in the General Fund. So that's where we're seeing a lot of the individuals. But certainly a lot of these names, I know you all would be familiar with. And then, of course, we have a few that have not officially made their retirement, but they've indicated to us that they are. And so we're providing some cushion here in case that they do retire, whether or not that happens in this fiscal year or next.
But of the ones that we do know that are retiring, what's the number? How many?
Yeah, I'd have to count it up here. I don't have the list, but I'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, one more time, anyone with questions? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, with no one signed up, this will conclude the public hearing for Bill 22-004. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
We'll take a brief recess and start again at 7:30. Chair calls the order Legislative Session Day 22-012. Counsel, this evening, we're honored to have members of PAC 564 from St. Margaret's, Luke and Hayden, they're going to come forward and lead us in the pledge. So I would ask you all to please stand and follow with the prayer from Councilman Wagner. Whenever you're ready, fellows.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening seeking guidance and civility as we all work together to solve issues within our communities. Grant us the courage, the common sense, and the required knowledge to be convicted that each decision that we render is in our hearts, the best for the citizens that we each represent. Help us to accomplish the tasks that are before us and to always be mindful of your Spirit. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Counsel, may I have general consent to move to Item 5 on the agenda and return back to Agenda Item 4 thereafter?
Certainly.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 5, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Counsel appointment, Harford Living Treasurer, Douglas Washburn. May I have a motion? Mr. Schroedz?
I make a motion to approve the Cultural Arts Board's nomination of Douglas Washburn as a Harford Living Treasurer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. It's been moved to second it to approve the appointment of Harford Living Treasurer for Mr. Washburn. Are there any comments? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giandordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroedz?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
There's seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative. The appointment of Douglas Washburn as a Harford Living Treasurer is hereby approved. Agenda Item Number 4, Presentation and Proclamations, Harford Living Treasurer, Douglas Washburn. Councilman Schroedz, you want to step down first? Mr. Washburn, bring anyone that you like with you, please. Gentlemen? You want to read in or you want to wait? Please, go right ahead.
Whereas Douglas Washburn received the Harford County Cultural Arts Board recommendation to the Harford County Council for recognition as a Harford Living Treasurer. And whereas Doug has been married to his high school sweetheart, Mary Louise Stewart, for 54 years. In the 1970s and 1980s, he coached his daughter and son's sports teams for Harford County Parks and Rec. In 2001, Doug retired from his 34-year career in telecommunications and began a 20-year career in genealogy and history. And whereas Doug has written four Harford historical bulletins, published three local histories, provided sizable research for a book on Eden Mill, digitized the Bel Air Town meeting records, and digitized photos for the historic Harford program that aired on the Harford Cable Network. Since 2007, Doug has been a volunteer information technology chair for the Harford, no, I'm sorry, for the Historical Society of Harford County. And whereas Mr. Washburn has conducted the Harford Living Treasures interviews for Harford County Public Library since 2002, and written historical articles for Councilman Schroedz's newsletter, The Northern Zone, since its inception in 2015. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 12th day of April 2022, do hereby proclaim Douglas Washburn a Harford Living Treasurer and be it further known that his lifetime experiences and contributions to the Harford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Harford County. With his memories and history, will be recorded by the Harford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become part of the oral history collection of the library.
Congratulations. Mr. Washburn has done so much for Harford County by documenting our history. You know, for 20 years, he's been the one that has been conducting the oral histories for our living treasures that we hear all the time. So when those are put away into the library records forever, it's his interview of them that is also part of that. So I thought, what better than to nominate you as a Harford Living Treasurer, not only for that, but again, like was read in, all the publications that you've done documenting our Harford County history and heritage and genealogy. I mean, really, this has become your passion, and we appreciate you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you have anything that you'd like to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up? Agenda Item Number 6, Special Presentations, we have none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Public Hearing, April 5, 2022. Legislative Day 22-011, April 5, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda Item Number 8, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. Resolution 015-22, Master Water and Sewer Plan, Update, Spring 2022. Mr. Woods, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 15-22, Master Water and Sewer Plan, Update, Spring 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Giandordano. It's moved to second it to approve Resolution 015-22. Are there any comments? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giandordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroedz?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Resolution 015-22 is hereby approved. Agenda Item Number 9, Introduction of Bills, we have none. 10, Introduction and Consideration of Amendments. Amendments to Bill 22-003, Perryman Peninsula Moratorium. Amendments 1 through 6 to Bill 22-003 were introduced on April the 5th and will be considered this evening. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President.
Mr. Buola?
Yes, I. Motion to approve Amendments 1 through 6 to Bill 23-003.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Giandordano. It's moved to second to approve Amendments 1 through 6. Are there any comments? Mr. Buola?
Thank you, Council President. Amendments 1 and 2 just delineate what the boundaries of the Perryman Peninsula is by adding a map. Amendments 3, 4, and 5 change the start date of the committee from the date that the bill becomes law to the 60 days later when the bill takes effect. And Bill 6, I mean Amendment 6 removes the Harford County Department of Inspections, Licensing, and Permits and inserts a traffic engineer.
Any other comments? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Giandordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroedz?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Amendments 1 through 6 to Bill 22-003 are hereby approved. Mr. Wagner, please read in Amendments 7 through 15 into the record for introduction.
Amendment Number 7 introduced by Councilmember Buola on Page 3 in Line 4, strike "time" unless further extended and substitute "time." Amendments Number 8 through 15 are introduced by Councilmember Buola, Wagner, and Giandordano. Amendment Number 8 on Page 2 in Line 19, strike "end expansion." Amendment Number 9 on Page 2 in Line 20, strike "structures" and substitute "buildings" for either a business or industrial use. Amendment Number 10 on Page 3 in Line 1, strike "commercial, industrial, or residential" and substitute "commercial or industrial." Amendment Number 11 on Page 3 in Line 2 after "Peninsula," insert "This moratorium shall not apply to the improvement or expansion of any existing industrial or commercial building or structure." Amendment Number 12 on Page 3, strike "beginning with approval" in Line 5 down through "residential" in Line 7 and substitute "approval or building permits related to the construction of any new commercial or industrial." Amendment Number 13 on Page 3 in Line 8 after "County," insert "provided, however, that this moratorium does not preclude the continued processing of any submitted, amended, or supplemented application short of final building permit or final site plan issuance, including without limitation any application referenced in the January 19, 2022 Development Advisory Committee Minutes." Amendment Number 14 on Page 3 in Line 10, strike "commercial, industrial, or residential" and substitute "commercial or industrial." Amendment Number 15 on Page 3 in Line 12, strike "commercial, industrial, or residential" and substitute "commercial or industrial."
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. These amendments will be considered at a future meeting. Agenda Items 11 through 14, we have none. 15 from the, business from the President. Just, again, I just want to remind everyone that we have our Council Budget Work Session scheduled in front of us, Monday through Thursday, April 25 through the 28. Those sessions will be audio livestreamed and archived on the website. In addition to work sessions, the council will hold two fiscal year 23 budget public hearings, Wednesday, May 4, here in these chambers at 7:00 PM, Wednesday, May 11, in these chambers at 7:00 PM. Both budget public hearings will be livestreamed and archived on the council website. With that, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I'll yield my time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, this week, I'd like to give a shout out to our heroes behind the headsets up at our 911 Center. This week marks the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and it's time that we all recognize and reach out and tell our gratitude and thank our public safety professionals that run our EOCs, our Emergency Operations Centers, and our 911 Center. It's actually one of the toughest jobs in public safety. Everyone thinks that everyone out in the field, our field providers, have it rough. I'm telling you, our 911 dispatchers, our call takers, and everyone at the EOC has it rougher. It's hard to sit behind that console and hear someone cry for help, and knowing that the only thing you can do is hope that the field providers get there fast enough. So it's one of the toughest jobs in public safety, and I want to make sure everyone understands that and recognizes them for the heroes that they are. And I've traveled all over the country doing public safety and emergency management, and I'm here to tell you, we have the best in the nation when it comes to our telecommunications workers, our 911 operators, our dispatchers, our call takers. They're some of the best I've ever worked with, and I've been in disasters all over this country. We should be very proud of them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. They truly are the first responder. Mr. Giandordano?
Thank you, Council President. Today, I attended the grand opening of Ferrari Frames and Design on Main Street, Trish Ferrari. So they do more than just your normal frames, like if you have a jersey or a banner. I have a 2001 or '02 University of Maryland banner, and she can box that. So it's right, the old Darnell Jeweleries. So if you get a chance, they used to be in Armory Marketplace. So stop in and say hi, and if you have anything for them, they would appreciate it. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Schroedz?
Thank you, Council President. Over the weekend, we did celebrate at the Library Gala, and it's also their 75th anniversary. I know several of us were there that night, and I know it takes a lot to pull off that event through the foundation and all the volunteers, and I know it must have been a very successful event, I'm sure it was. I don't know what the total number was, but, you know, they raise money for things outside of what, you know, taxpayers would wish to pay for. So it was a well-attended event, and hats off to them, and congratulations on their 75th anniversary. Also, Harford County Farm Bureau and other volunteers, they hosted Boots Out For Butterfly. It's kind of a nickname for Lila Von Rowan, who is undergoing treatment for kidney cancer, and that was held at the Grove. So thanks for everybody who participated in that and contributed to a great event. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wagner?
Yeah, the Library Foundation and all the workers and volunteers from the library did pull off a very enjoyable evening there at the Abington Library. It was held up for two years because of the pandemic, and finally, we got it in. And I know there's another one scheduled for, I believe, November coming up. So, and they do raise money for good causes. They had a check there that evening for more than $300,000 for the Darlington Library branch. So certainly, that's a worthwhile cause if anybody would watch in the future and want to attend. We had a passing in the Churchville neighborhood over the last few days of somebody who's very, very significant in the community and has been all his very long life. I believe he was 96 when he passed. It was Earl McIntyre. There's probably not a farmer alive in Harford County that didn't know of Earl or had used Earl or somewhere along the line, because he was probably the top agricultural mechanic anywhere in the county, and we certainly are all saddened to hear of his passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Buola?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things this evening. First of all, for those of you who've been paying attention, Senate Bill 642 passed the legislation session just recently this year. This is the height monitoring, the vehicle height monitoring system that hopefully we can get on Spisushia Road, Old Stepney, and Mitchell. And this will hopefully eliminate, slow down, eliminate the 18-villa traffic on those roads that are not supposed to be there. And I'd like to say thank you to Senator Bob Cassley and Teresa Riley and the entire delegation of Harford County for all their hard work, delegate Teresa Riley, and the entire delegation for all their hard work in doing this legislative session. They really had their backs against the wall, but they accomplished a lot, so I wanted to say thank you to them. Also, I've been receiving a number of complaints about Chapel Road. And I did reach out to both the City of Havity Grace and here at the county, too. And Chapel Road is jointly owned between Blenheim, I believe it's pronounced Blenheim Road, and Bully Rock Parkway. It's jointly owned by the City of Havity Grace and the county. And then the rest is owned by the county. And at this time, there are no plans to repave that road. So I will keep pushing the issue and see if we can get that moved up, because I went down that road and it does need to be repaved. That's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Buola. Agenda Item Number 17, Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have 24 this evening.
Okay. Again, with that many speakers, I would remind everyone to be prompt with your time and respectfully be each other. Call your first speaker.
John Malamo, followed by Paul Filachi.
Good evening, sir.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. The order hasn't changed. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Bel Air, Maryland. Gentlemen, the entire point of all these discussions is to review government and governance in Harford County. The situation at the airport accurately describes how you operate and how the county administration operates. It is about you and how you do your job. The entire sordid mess starts in these chambers with you. Other land use issues now confronting you are similarly the result of council zoning and land use activities. In every case, when voting for the issue at hand, there was no consideration of the consequences, requirements, and resources to adequately support these decisions. Is it that much more difficult to look beyond the dais and consider how your actions would affect the residents of the area, or has the job become so routine that you simply stamp approved on the paper without any consideration of how your constituents will be impacted? For one current issue, zoning changes were made in 1997. Then Councilman Glassman sat on that council. No mention of any infrastructure requirements then. As a state delegate and then a state senator and currently as the executive, he did not provide much of a solution to the problems of those zoning changes. Some of you were on the same train with Mr. Glassman when he arrived at the Harford County Station Stop as county executive. Some were already waiting at the county council. None of you did anything until a couple months ago. It appears that the gestation period for solutions in Harford County, that is, the time duration between conception of a problem and birth of a solution, is 25 years in approaching election. Council solution, study the problem. From the county executive, it's been this way for a long time. It's good for the county, more of the same, thank you. Finally, a grade on your efforts in zoning and land use and how it reflects on governance by the Harford County Council. Credibility, none observed. Responsibility, none observed. Accountability, none observed. Transparency, none observed. Honesty, none observed. Integrity, none observed. Moral courage, none observed. Mental acuity, none observed. I submit to you that these sordid episodes in their entirety are you were making and began in these chambers. It is all within your purview, responsibility and authority. They are an embarrassment, a disgrace, and a disgusting mess. You failed as a county council. Paraphrasing Pogo, a cartoon character who lived in the Okefenokee Swamp, we have met the problem, and it is you. You are a fraud, a humbug, and a pox upon this county. Gentlemen, this entire discussion is about you. You are the swamp, and that is just the way it is in Harford County, and you just don't care. Good night.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Paul Filachi, Perryman, Maryland, and 19-year resident of Harford County. I ask you to vote for the moratorium to give the Perryman community in Harford County some additional time to form a team of experts, politicians, and representation from the community, some, a little extra time. A little time before the largest e-commerce freight distribution project in Harford County paves over a 711-acre farm, an area greater than three M&amp;T Bank stadiums, all on one street in one community. Four reasons why. Number one, drinking water. In October 2000, the Maryland Department of the Environment did a source water assessment for the Perryman Well Field. In the summary, it was determined that Perryman Well Field is the largest source of groundwater in Harford County. The Perryman Well Field supplies 30% of the water demand to the total distribution system, 22 years since the last assessment. Two, emergency response time. In 1997, the master plan, when this area was zoned late industrial, a second entry/exit was designated via Woodley Roads to Route 715. Since the zoning change, 10 freight distribution centers with 10 million square feet of freight distribution buildings have been allowed to be built without the completion of that connection. The fire department representative on the DAC committee has been warning that the response time to the warehouses in Perryman community are not adequate since 2016. A second entry/exit is required. DAC has not followed the advice for eight years. Number three, desperate impact and economic injustice to the lower-income areas south of I-95. The industrialization of the communities south of I-95 exposed those communities to higher tractor-trailer risk, higher pollution risk from industrial plants, higher pollution risk from diesel truck fumes, higher risk from truck accidents, higher risk from truck standing, parking not only on Route 40, but also rural roads like Perryman Road, Old Philadelphia Road, and illegally driving down country roads not built for trucks like Spisushia Road. Thanks for Bill 642. 25 years of economic discrimination. Number four, historic impact. The Perryman community has been the native home of the Iroquois tribes of the Shuscohannock when Captain John Smith sailed in the Bush River in 1608. In 1671, St. George Parish Spisushia Church was established and is Maryland's oldest Episcopalian parish. In 1920, F.O. Mitchell and Sons harvested 200 tons of corn daily as Perryman and Aberdeen were thriving candy industry. Over 400 years of history need to be preserved properly, not paved over. On the backside, there's a map of the area for you gentlemen. The moratorium asked for 150 days for a study group of experts to review the DAC process that has not listened to its fire tree for eight years, to review a drinking water assessment that is 22 years old, to review a DAC process that is allowed for economic discrimination for 25 years, just asking for a few months to review over 400 years of history. Historical preservation is not even part of the DAC process. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Nancy Post, followed by Kate McDonald.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, Nancy Post. My information is on file. Perryman Peninsula folks handed legislation to the council that included creating a moratorium for Abingdon Woods and Perryman Peninsula. Since then, Abingdon Woods was stripped from the bill despite our nonstop petitions to keep Abingdon Woods included in the legislation. Add Abingdon Woods back into the citizen-initiated moratorium. Drive out mega warehouse developers in southern Harford like you willingly drove out farm breweries in northern Harford. May 2021, Mr. Wagner introduced Bill 21012, quote, "an emergency act to establish a temporary moratorium on the approval of site plans and issuance of building permits for the construction of new farm breweries within the county." Mr. Wagner's 2021 bill was in response to a small group of residents along Waverly Drive in his northern Harford district and not far from his home. The property in question was approximately 15 acres, 22 times smaller than Abingdon Woods and 47 times smaller than Perryman Peninsula. Per the bill's text, Harford officials modified Bill 15039 dated February 2016. The bill claimed, quote, "Experience has revealed various negative effects arising from the commercial operation of some of the three..." from the commercial operation of some of the three current farm breweries, including, without limitation, excessive traffic for the adjacent road type and excessive noise disturbing residences, residences in the vicinity of the establishments which were not anticipated by the farm brewery enabling legislation." The bill stated need to study the placement, construction, minimum acreage, and operation of farm breweries for the peace and order of the public, to lessen the negative effects which arise from the construction and operations of a farm brewery for agriculturally-zoned property, in other words, northern Harford. Since twenty nineteen, citizens have been protesting the destruction of Abingdon Woods' three-hundred-and-twenty-six acres with the development of Abingdon Business Park. Per the site plan, it will have parking spots for one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two cars, ninety-seven trailer trucks, and three-hundred-and-fourteen trailer drops. Since twenty twenty-one, citizens have been protesting the destruction of Perryman Peninsula's seven-hundred-and-eleven acres with the Mitchell property development. Per the site plan, it will have parking spots for two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight tractor trailers and three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-three cars. Harford officials should realize that overbuilt southern Harford cannot handle this massive influx of vehicles on our residential roads based on common sense and experiences shared by us citizens.
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
Harford has the potential to be sued if...
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consider us like you consider the builders.
Good evening, ma'am. Sir? No applause. Because if you do, I'm gonna have you removed. Thank you.
Hi, Kate McDonald, Park Beach Drive, Perryman. Good evening, thank you. I've lived in Harford County for the last ten years. We moved here from Austin, Texas for my husband's career with the Department of Defense and initially settled in Bel Air, but quickly moved to south Harford County. In Austin, I was a land developer for twenty years, building infrastructure for residential developments, and now I work in commercial real estate. This effort is not to trample on the Mitchells' property rights, but to protect ours. We have the right to enjoy our property, to be safe and healthy in our community, and to preserve our property values. For some, this is an age-old and lifelong battle against environmental injustice and to be treated equally and given the same protections afforded to others by our governing bodies regardless of the skin, our skin color, income level, or geographic region. Who are we? We're Republicans, we're Democrats, we're of every ethnicity, we are poor and not so poor. We're probably the most diverse group of people in one setting that I, that completely agree on the same issue that I've ever encountered in my life, and that is a beautiful thing. Not the whole project, but, you know, the fact that we all agree. We have taken the time to knock on our neighbors' doors and to find out what their concerns are with this project, the ones before it, and we are all overwhelmingly together in this fight regardless of who and how many are able to make it to these meetings. This is a fight against the environmental injustice and the continued obliteration of the Perryman area with mega warehouse distribution centers, truck traffic, and pollution. That's the crux of it. It's a fight to get Harford County to see how disproportionate this zoning has been and how it's created its disparate impact on the people of Perryman. We all agree that Perryman, the Perryman area was targeted because of our socioeconomic demographics and that our area has been systemically neglected by the county with regard to investment or disinvestment in our infrastructure for years. Whether we've lived in Perryman for a hundred years or two years, enough is enough. Whether we live on the water or in the mobile home community, enough is enough. Regardless of our, regardless if this property was zoned in eighteen B.C. or nineteen ninety-seven, enough is enough. Regardless of our ethnicity or socioeconomic status, enough is enough. It's time for Harford County leadership to step it up with regard to Perryman and the residents of Perryman. Just because you've been doing something unchecked for years doesn't make it right, legal, or justified. Everyone has their breaking point, and we have reached ours, so please help us.
Thank you.
Thank you. William Graham, followed by Lee Maddox.
Hello, my name is Will Graham. I live on Cool Spring Road in Bel Air. And I'm here again to speak, as I did last week, to defend Abingdon Woods and Perryman Peninsula Fields. I'm not sure why we don't speak more or discuss more about the ongoing environmental and climate disaster that we're experiencing globally right now. Polar ice shelves are melting, coral reefs destruction, extinction of species. And our, we're gonna suffer from this, but our children and our grandchildren are gonna suffer even more unbelievably. I know it sounds dramatic, as I said last week, but I've been looking into a lot of sites of scientific and environmental groups, and I have a quote which I think is representative of most of the ones I'm seeing from a group called Scientists Rebellion. It's a letter of demand from over two hundred scientists that says, "Increasingly severe heat waves, drought, and natural disasters are occurring year after year, while sea levels may rise by several meters this century, displacing hundreds of millions of people living in coastal areas. There's a growing fear among scientists that simultaneous extreme weather events in major agricultural areas could cause global food shortage, thus triggering societal collapse." That's pretty scary. As I said last week, I know that Harford County can't solve this global problem by itself. However, in the twenty twenty-two legislative session, the state of Maryland passed the Climate Solutions Now Act. And here's a quote from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Chesapeake Bay Foundation is pleased the Climate Solutions Now Act has been enacted following Governor Larry Hogan's decision to allow it to become law without his signature. This landmark new law will put Maryland among the leading states working to address harmful greenhouse gas emissions from burning fossil fuels that are causing climate change. In Maryland, greenhouse gas emissions from vehicles, power plants, and buildings are contributing to global climate change, which is causing stronger storms, sea level rise, and increased flooding that threaten communities. In the Chesapeake Bay, these symptoms of climate change are leading to additional pollution from increasing stormwater runoff, higher water temperatures, and changes in wildlife distribution. Maryland's become a leader in this effort to help stop global climate change. Harford County now just has to follow the state of Maryland, do what's right for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Lee Maddox, seventeen hundred Church Point Court, Perryman. I have lived in Perryman for twenty-four years. My dad found my place for me. While he was alive, I frequently thanked him for finding my forever home. I find it interesting to learn Harford County residents and the council are under siege by an out-of-town developer claiming to know what is best for Perryman. In fact, they are so certain of being right, they think it is okay to threaten this body with litigation, including personal liability. In my previous life as a captain with the Maryland State Police, I cannot tell you how often people threatened to sue me and those under my command. In my experience, I can tell you that these threats were mostly bluffs from desperate people. The developers are claiming the moratorium legislation before you is illegal, so let's start with that. Land use moratoriums are not, per se, unconstitutional. They are subject to a rational review with a presumption of validity. If reviewed, the local jurisdiction should be able to show the moratorium is reasonably related to a proper public purpose. Concerns for drinking water, infrastructure, and pollution all would seem to qualify as a proper public purpose. The developers are also threatening to sue you personally. Public officials, when acting on discretionary issues, are granted the defense of qualified immunity for non-malicious acts. This means you are all protected from all but evil motive, intent to injure, ill-will, or fraud. Establishing the moratorium as legal and understanding your protection against personal liability by qualified immunity, the logical fallacy being used by the developer then becomes obvious. This logical fallacy is so often used by those desperate to win, it has a name: argumentum ad baculum, or appeal of force. I urge you all not to fall hostage to this false argument. The moratorium is not illegal. You are not acting with actual malice or fraud, and your actions do not imperil the qualified immunity extended to public officials. Your yes vote will protect the health, safety, and welfare of those you serve. You can hold your head high in the light of day when you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen Alcock, followed by Matt Larroway.
Good evening, sir.
Apologies for the clapping. Didn't realize that was a problem. First time I've been in this court, so. Good evening. My name is Steve Alcock. I am a resident of Bel Air, and despite my English accent, I am also a citizen of this great country. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider rejecting the application for Abingdon Business Park and its development, and to support the moratorium on the Perryman project. The damage to our society and our environment is at stake if we continue to allow rampant, unchecked development at the expense of our natural world. I have lived and worked in four countries over the years, so I speak from great experience. And in those countries, development is welcomed, just as it is here. The only difference is, is that it's no longer welcomed at the expense of the environment which we all treasure. That's some really important point. In fact, many of those countries now have a policy of brownfield development first, which means before the destruction of any natural environment would even be considered, they would have to look at redevelopment. I don't know whether that exists here. I'm not sure. So some of you might think that I'm a hippie or some new wave eco-warrior. I know, I'll let you make your own decision about that t-shirt. However, I would point out to you that I'm a businessman, and I've successfully run a property management company here in Maryland for the last eleven years. So I am not naive to the seduction of profit. You will have heard many reasons for these types of requests from many different people tonight: water pollution and the impact of the quality on the community's drinking water, concerns about overdevelopment of the warehouse infrastructure, and the increasing response times for a fire engine in the event of a fire, economic impact statements on how the increased amount of trucks going to and from these places will impact people in lower-income areas south of ninety-five, environmental destruction, habitat destruction, species destruction. You may have even heard of a vague and tenuous argument about an English captain in the early sixteen hundreds and the consequential damage to the historical artifacts that would happen as an outcome event. The reality, however, is far simpler than these complexities. The decisions that you make today should be made in the interests of the whole community, not for a company and its directors' profits, nor for the tax revenues that Harford County will benefit from if the developers win. Your role as a decision-maker of this county and its community is far more important than that. The decisions that you make today on these matters are often termed as societal impacting events because of the permanent nature involved with the changes proposed if they were to happen. As representatives, you are also guardians and are responsible for protecting our environment for the county as a whole. That's your duty. So I will close with the following: this is not about me, nor is it about you. It is about the future, generations that come after us, and what we leave to them. Your names can either be associated with the decimation of the environment in which we all live simply for profit or with the fight to preserve and maintain it. Your actions on these very important decisions will echo through time. I trust you will make the right decision. Thank you for allowing me the time to raise my concerns with you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Matt Larroway, my address is on file. Good evening, Council President and members of the council. I'm with Chesapeake Real Estate Group and wanted to take this opportunity to update everyone as to what we've been doing and where we are in the process as we, as we track toward the moratorium vote. Our team has received all required comments from Harford County and the state of Maryland that we, that we've been waiting for since our DAC submission on December twenty-second and the subsequent DAC meeting on January nineteenth. The comments that came in significantly behind the rest were those related to traffic and stormwater management. First, for the benefit of the public, I wanted to quickly explain how the traffic study works. The developer meets with Harford County at a scoping meeting, at which time the county defines the parameters of the study, including what roads and intersections will be studied, peak hours to be observed, and the actual counting method that they will require us to utilize. It is after this meeting that the county and the developer enter into an official scoping agreement. We complied entirely with the terms of the scoping agreement during our traffic study. We received our comments on the traffic study on March fourth from Harford County and on March eighteenth from Maryland State Highway Administration. None of the comments identified there's a problem. The comments simply asked for an expansion from the agreed-upon scope. This is actually a violation of the scoping agreement and a very irregular practice. In spite of this, we've gone ahead and are updating the traffic study to include all the data requested by the county and the state. We know the data is important, and we're happy to make the accommodation. We expect to have this completed shortly and are ready for our resubmission package. This is a great example of how the development process is working properly in Harford County. Plans and studies were submitted, questions and concerns were raised, and further study is taking place, all within the confines of the already agreed-upon established development process. To go above this, we contacted the state police, as Perryman Road is a state road, to request data on traffic complaints. Since twenty thirteen, there have been five traffic complaints on Perryman Road, an average of point five-five per year. In fact, there have only been thirty-nine total calls for service on Perryman Road in the last eight years. That is straight from the Maryland State Police. We're waiting for the same data from the Harford County Sheriff's Office for the county roads in that area. Seeing as there have been minimal complaints over the years, no professional, no professional traffic study exists or has been produced by us, Protect Perryman, or anyone else that shows the types of traffic problems that are being represented by the Perryman group. If this was a major issue prior to our proposal, it would have come up. Photographs and Facebook posts do not show the full story. They show a moment in time. Inevitably, we've all been stuck at a light on nine twenty-four, one fifty-two, twenty-four, or any other roads in the county, on our way to or from this meeting, in fact. At certain times of day, traffic happens. It's a fact of life. It would be disingenuous to take a picture, post it on Facebook, and demand that a moratorium be instituted on projects that bring jobs and economic value to the county due to that one moment in time. We appreciate your time and respectfully ask that this county council allow the development process to run its course. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Shannon, followed by Rommel Crabtree.
Good evening. My name is Ken Shannon. I live at two zero four four Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I operate a small business in Perryman that provides information technology and project management consulting services. I'm also a senior citizen and a Vietnam era vet. That's E-R-A, not E-R-R-O-R. As a small business owner, as a senior, as a veteran, but most importantly, as a Harford County citizen, a resident of Perryman, I ask that the Harford County Council vote yes on Bill twenty-two dash zero zero three, the Temporary Moratorium on New Building Permits on Perryman Peninsula. The developer has been spamming Harford County residents, saying the new homeowners want the county council to prevent the Mitchell family from selling their land and exercising their rights as property owners. That is not true. First, the people working to protect Perryman can't be characterized as new homeowners. As I mentioned in testimony last week, I've lived in Perryman for nineteen years, along with my wife and two daughters. That's a total of seventy-six years compared to the small number of hours that the developer has spent in Perryman. And my family and I will still be in Perryman after the disastrous project has spoiled the community with... has spoiled the community with congestion, air pollution, noise, and disruption. Second, the Mitchells are not being prevented from selling their property. Their property rights are intact. Me and my neighbors understand perfectly that they have a right to dispose of their property as they wish. When a mixed-use development was proposed for the farm around 2007, my Perryman neighbors and I had respectful meetings with the developer. I wasn't at county council meetings in a ball cap or carrying a protest sign in Bel Air or a leaf letting neighborhoods, as I have in the past four months. The difference is, what was proposed at that time was not outrageous, unfair, and wrong, like the current warehouses that are being proposed, the mega warehouses that are being proposed. Just as the Mitchells are entitled to their property rights, their neighbors in Perryman want their property rights respected. I live in one of the 400 houses that are on the other side of whatever ends up on the Mitchell Farm. I don't want it to be a half-mile-long warehouse that is proposed, surrounded by four other mega warehouses. Chapter 267 of the Harford County Code, the zoning code, is supposed to protect property rights by identifying the permitted uses of property for the various types of zoning. Obviously, something is wrong if a half-mile-long building would be allowed within a few hundred feet of existing homes. That is why we need a moratorium: to arrive at proper definitions for what things like light industrial, freight terminal, and warehouse mean, and to make sure that development is in accordance with the purpose of the zoning code: to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Rommel Crabtree, 801 Cedar Lane, Bel Air. Good evening, Council President, members of the council. It's good to see you again, and members of the audience. Signs Part III. Unbelievable. Part I was signs in public right-of-ways placed illegally. There are more now than there were when I started, and it's getting worse. That being said, there's some of you doing a great job. The cooperation has been wonderful. The disappearance of signs that were mistakenly placed illegally has been wonderful. And some of you never even had to move any. That's an even better job. Thank you very much. But for those that are making it worse, I mean, I just can't even understand where your brain is. Get your signs out of the right-of-way, please, okay? Part II is even more amazing, I thought. That's signs on private property. We're not even bothering to ask the people to own it if it's okay to put a sign there. That's theft, okay? That's pretty bad. Part III is even more interesting, if not quite as amazing. And that is, while going door-to-door, I'm finding businesses where the owners gave permission to put the sign. And then the candidate went out front, stuck the sign in state right-of-way. Think about that. You got permission from the property owner, but you didn't put the sign on that person's property. You put it in state right-of-way illegally and left it there. And there's still a bunch of those out there, and we need you to go out there and police your signs. Get it right. If you want to be a lawmaker, you can't be a lawbreaker. I mean, you want us to obey the laws you write? This is blacklighter law. If you can't obey it, get out. And I mean it. If you can't obey the law, you don't deserve to be here. You don't deserve to be in Annapolis. You don't deserve to be in any power over the rest of us at all. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Whit McQuig, followed by Gene Simmons.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President and members of the council. My name is Whit McQuig. I am the Vice President of Development for Chesapeake Real Estate Group. To date, when we've talked about the impacts to the community of this project, we've referred primarily to those that live adjacent and in close proximity to the Mitchell Farm property. Tonight, I'd like to discuss another community that will be affected by this development. You may have noticed some people holding up signs as you came in. They're hard to miss. They've got high-visibility workwear. They're construction workers, and they're part of our development community. They showed up to support our development community. The people in our development community might not live next to the project. They will nonetheless be affected by it. Site contractors, concrete and steel workers, engineers, laborers, landscapers, material manufacturer workers, facility staff, and many, many other players in this development community will be affected by this project. These projects are how these people in our development community feed their families. They put clothes on their backs. They make up the hard-working communities that this county is known for. Our group has been a dependable source of work for thousands of people for decades. We take great pride in our role, and we are proud to stand up with those who we work with. Our development community is diverse. Our projects employ and support a workforce in small businesses from diverse racial, socioeconomic, and educational backgrounds. We take pride in our partnerships with women, veteran, and minority-owned businesses, and workers. It's our honor to be providing good-paying jobs for folks who may not have been able to get a college degree or have, you know, had a hard time finding work to support their families. I'm on construction sites every day. I know the people that were outside. I'm friends with them. I consider them my teammates. You all might not believe that, and that's totally fine. I'm not here to convince you. What I'm here to tell you is that we provide thousands of jobs for people who depend on these projects. These are real people, real jobs, that live in communities this council represents. Together, we build the infrastructure that puts the packages on your doorsteps, puts jobs in this community, and tax money into the budget to make the long-term improvements that benefit all residents of Harford County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. I voiced, Gene Simmons, 324 Chappa Crossing Way in Chappa. I voiced my opposition to Abingdon and the Perryman Project, basically because I'm a 37-year traffic engineer with State Highway Administration. And I said both projects are severely flawed and have severe traffic safety issues. And I'm digging into the environmental a little bit. But then something happened in the last couple of weeks. And we've been getting Facebook ads from a group called Perryman Improvement Project. They're very good ads. Whoever put them together, really, were very good at it. And then yesterday, in the mail, my wife brings in from the mailbox, a really nice mailer. Oh, it's really good. Perryman Improvement Project. So I asked her, I looked at it, and I knew what it was. I asked her, I said, "Who do you think sent this?" And my wife, who absolutely knows less about politics than she does baseball, said, "Oh, I think there's some people in Perryman who must want that project." So, with a big grin on my face, I went on to Google. And I Googled the Perryman Improvement Project. 1343 Ashton Road, Suite B. Turns out, the Chesapeake Real Estate Group is located at 1343 Ashton Road, Suite B. Now, why would the Chesapeake Real Estate Group have to hide that they were sending out the Facebook ads and this? Why wouldn't they just own up, be proud of their work, and say, "Hey, here's what we're doing"? But no. They send this out under the assumption that there's so many fallacies in this report as well. So I want to know, why did the Chesapeake Real Estate Group, why are they telling us that this is good for us? So I went on the Redfin. The reason they don't care is because the top three people, ones here tonight, live in properties almost worth $6 million where they live. The head of the, Mr. Lighthizer, lives in a $3.8 million mansion somewhere down. I'm not going to say the address. That would be unprofessional. So they live in mansions. They live in beautiful locations, but they tell us, "We're okay with a commercial development." I checked. None of those gentlemen live next to a commercial development. As far as Perryman is concerned, this is just, this is, the problems there is, and I didn't hit on it last time, we are looking at autonomous trucks. They're on the road today. I mean, this isn't some wish dream. So the people who live in Perryman, the people who live in Abingdon, think about tractor-trailers, box trucks, at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, because they're here, and they're going to do it. And as far as the traffic issue is concerned, it's really disingenuous to say there are no traffic and environmental concerns. I think you saying that is a very dishonest and unrepresented and...
Mr. Simmons, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Holly McComas, followed by Sandra Herrick.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Holly McComas, 1826 Park Beach Drive, Perryman. The 1700s, that's when my family arrived from Scotland to Harford County, Maryland, right up the Bush River. My distant cousin, James McComas, at age 40, was one of the signers of the Bush Declaration. That was on March 22nd, 1775. He died in 1791 at the age of 56. My family has cared about this county since the 1700s. We've cared about our neighbors, our land, our environment, and our roads, which were much different back then, but we cared about them. I'm very vested in this community. I have a family history, and hopefully, a family future here. Our concern for this project is not out of ill-will or meanness. That is not us. We are voicing our concerns using the legal system to maintain a quality of life that people of Harford County are accustomed to. That includes people of Perryman. People of Perryman are part of Harford County as well. I drive on our roads. And I was coming from Forest Hill earlier this week, and it was a beautifully paved road, the whole road paved. And I was driving home. It was late at night. And I'm driving down our roads that have patches of asphalt in places that I didn't even think needed repair. And then we have another section of our road that is always in need of repair. And it's got a cutout around it, but it just sits there. Our roads need improvement. The projects, the warehouse projects that have already been put in, there were supposed to be road projects then. They haven't been done. We're struggling. Please, please, give us more time to pass this moratorium, just to give us time to study correctly what's going on in Perryman. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Sandra Herrick, 1900 Perryman Road, Aberdeen. One day, I'd been out all day, and I went home after the meeting here that I had enjoyed that evening. My daughter says, "Mom, Barry Glassman was on our porch today." I went, "Excuse me? What did he need?" He wanted to know if he could go hunt with either deer or turkeys on the back of our property. And I said, "Well, you expect..." She said, "Mom, I told him right away. It's wetlands back there. You can't go back there." I said, "Now, isn't it ironic that he wants to hunt turkeys or deer in Perryman, where he just cannot wait to pave all of our land, eradicate all the deer and turkeys and the rest of the wildlife, so no one could ever possibly hunt here again?" I said, "Look at the 48 acres across the street. It used to be beautiful. We had deer and turkeys there. And now, 449 feet from my front door, I have a drop-and-hook logistics building. Lucky me. No deer, no animals at all over there. Just lots of noise, lots of traffic, lots of empty containers. And I keep getting told how wonderful it is and how good it is. And I got one of those flyers in the mail telling me what a great improvement. I have trouble noticing the improvement in my front yard. I don't know. Maybe it's me. But I hope you can understand that unless you'd like it in your front yard, it's not that great an improvement, okay?"
Thank you, ma'am.
Dagmar Sax, followed by Ron Stucinski.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. How is your wife doing, by the way?
She's doing much better, thank you for asking.
Dagmar Sax, 1808 Park Beach Drive, Perryman. To the fellow residents and council members of Harford County, you've probably noticed the recent barrage of misinformation via texts and snail mail that you've been subjected to by the Perryman Improvement Project, the cover for the Chesapeake Real Estate Group. This developer from outside of our county is voicing opposition to Bill 22-003 in regards to their development plans for the Mitchell Farm. These improvements include over 7 million square feet of concrete, metal, and asphalt on waterfront property in what has been a farming and residential community on the Bush River for over a century. These developers are hiding behind outdated county plans, 20-year-old impact studies, vague zoning codes, and blatantly false statements to mislead the public and fill their wallets at our expense. They call the destruction of our wetlands and bald eagle's nests improvements. They don't care. They don't live here. Their project would pave over the aquifer that contains 30% of Harford County's water supply. Yes, that's our drinking water. But they don't care. They don't live here. To date, no independent county or state commission studies have been completed to inform the public of the potential damage that such development would wreck on our fragile Chesapeake watershed. But again, the developers don't care. They don't live here. What these developers fail to mention is that updated studies, which would be performed during the 150-day moratorium provided by Bill 22-003, would also expose extensive damage that the past 20 years of unchecked and unchallenged development has already caused to the Perryman Peninsula. God forbid that some of us residents should execute our First Amendment rights by questioning the so-called Perryman Improvement Project, okay? We do care. We live here. To all of our fellow Harford County residents, including our county council and Executive Barry Glassman, let me ask you: What would you, without question, support the equivalent of three M&amp;T stadiums on Route 165 in northern Harford County? Would you, without question, accept 2,018 wheelers per week on Jarrettsville Road or Jarrettsville Pike? That's one semi-truck per minute on a narrow, winding country road during a single school day. Imagine all those trucks on Mountain Road during your daily commute. Would you, without question, approve the pollution, noise, safety hazards, and traffic congestion that it would bring to your neighborhoods and the effects on your health and safety, or your children's? If the answer is no, then don't force it on Perryman. Why should, why shouldn't any of us question the potential effects of paving over thirty percent of the entire county's water source? Think about it, nearly one-third of the county might go without having safe drinking water? Well, which thirty percent of us should be forced to give up safe water? Please tell me. But the developers don't care, they don't live here, okay? We're simply asking our elected officials to approve a modest period to study the potential effects of this irrevocable change. Please approve Bill twenty-two dash zero, zero, three. Thank you.
Angie Lane.
Ron. Ron. Ron.
Ron Stuczynski, three nineteen Marina Avenue, newer waterfront homeowner, Aberdeen, Hartford County resident, fifty-one years. Might want to update your mailings and all that good stuff with all that information. I know you missed me last week and I missed you guys, but I watched everything, and I appreciate the council again taking time to hear us and everyone else involved. I'm kind of stuck tonight on what to say. I've repeatedly told you guys about our water situation. Dagmar summed it all up in her speech. But I do want to let you guys know, in the study twenty-two years ago that we had by David Drummond and Mr. Richard Johnson, water from several of these wells was contaminated. They had nitrate concentrates exceeding the EPA's maximum contamination level for drinking water, and in nineteen ninety-two, analysis from two wells showed excessive concentrate of trichlorothene that also exceeded the maximum contamination levels. Possibly caused by fertilizer discharged from on-site septic possible sources of nitrate. Military, commercial, and industrial uses activities are also possible sources of TCE levels. The land surface area, they said, that provides recharge to our wells of great importance to resource managers, because any contaminants that are spilled or released in that area might eventually migrate into the wells. These contributing areas must be protected from contamination in order to minimize the potential for contamination of the drinking water supply. Again, this was twenty-two years ago, before there was already ten million square feet of warehouses put in our peninsula. Couple other things I want to talk about while I have a minute. A few misrepresentations have been reported by other groups. Fiction, shutting down businesses. Fact, we support all businesses, smart and legal development of new ones. Fiction, violating property rights. So we support all property rights for all individuals, including our own. We have property rights as well. Fiction, projects started by Marylanders who are committed to responsible development that improves the quality of life in the state they love. Fact, started by out-of-town developers, not wanted in our community. We love our community and state without the destruction of our peninsula and destruction of our quality of life. If they love this project so much, why not love it in your own backyard? Fiction, want to stop all new construction on the peninsula. Fact, we want to stop your five-point-two-mega-million warehouse-square-foot project, whatever it is. We want to stop your destruction of our environment, your contamination of the drinking water for ninety thousand residents, your environmental racism in our community, and construction that is not permitted in LI Zone Peninsula that we live in and love, which you conveniently failed to put the LI in your ads. Finally, fiction, a small group of waterfront homeowners is trying to stop the project. Fact, our entire peninsula is trying to stop it as well as Hartford County. We have eleven hundred Facebook members, you have thirteen. We have eighteen hundred signatures on a petition, you have zero. We have nine hundred and forty-three submissions to our council opposing the project-
Comments to a close.
-and supporting this moratorium. Please support our moratorium.
Thank you.
Angie Lane, followed by Stacy Stone.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Angie Lane, my address is on file. I agree that the proposed development in Perryman will create additional jobs. However, I challenge this being a benefit to Hartford County. If you think that there are one thousand people in Hartford County living without opportunity, please send them my way. I've been an HR director for over fifteen years in southern, in the southern county. My plant in Bellcamp, in an appropriately GI-zoned area, is just under two hundred thousand square feet. We have three hundred employees over three shifts. My building is twenty-two, twenty-six times smaller than the proposed development. Out of my three hundred employees, only fifty-six percent reside in Hartford County. Forty-four percent, the majority of them, come from Baltimore. I have thirty-two open positions that I'm struggling to fill. And I can tell you that the surrounding businesses are dealing with the same labor shortages. We all share the same labor pool of employees, and they quickly go across the street for an extra twenty-five cents. How much more wage increases can be tolerated before businesses are forced to shut down because they can't afford to produce? So I'd like to ask the council, if this development goes through and one thousand new and exciting jobs are created, what help is planned for the existing businesses that will lose one thousand current employees? What amount of assistance, or rather taxpayer dollars, will be allocated to the companies who will be killed due to this development? Or even a better question, what if businesses and growth, I'm sorry, or even a better question, if businesses and growth are so important to this county, what is being done now to help fill local jobs? Why isn't there as much proactive action towards what exists today in the county as there is in future developments? This development will create hardships for existing businesses by increasing competition for labor. There's already plenty of opportunities available in Hartford County. Stopping this development does not kill jobs. It will protect existing businesses and provide a fair labor market. I agree that Hartford County should support businesses. Please consider those that currently exist and how your decisions may impact their operations.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen. Stacy Stone, twenty-one oh six Park Beach Drive. Tonight, I'm going to get personal about myself. I want you to understand at least one story in detail of who resides on the Perryman Peninsula. Fifty-four years ago, I was born to an unwed mother, a father from a prominent family who didn't want children and abandoned me before I was born. I was raised with mental health issues, the violence in the home, but by a loving mother and some wonderful grandparents. My mother married my stepfather when I turned eighteen. That was a loss of my financial, my need-based financial aid. I struggled, put myself through college, got a master's degree, all while having two children. Have two wonderful children. My youngest daughter is going to college for forensics. My son is about to turn twenty-six and come off my health insurance. He's been suffering with Lyme disease since he was eight. My home, all this blood, sweat, and tears that I put into building that home as a single mother myself, is being threatened. The value of that home is being threatened. A hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars might not mean much to some people, but for the long-term security of my son, the plan is to sell my home when I die so he can afford to take care of himself the rest of his life. He is partially disabled and will never be able to afford or never be able to work full-time and support himself. So, my sob story is I'm doing everything I can so that my child can live out the rest of his days without having to rely on a social net that really isn't strong enough to support a person. So, my personal story, it really means a lot to me that my property values do not go down. Please support this moratorium so we can put something in there that the Mitchells can make money off of, but does not drive my property values down by twenty-five percent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jillian Miller, followed by Melinda McGuire.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm short. Good evening, gentlemen. April is National Keep America Beautiful Month, so I'm going to get on the teal train a little bit. It really makes me think about this ongoing dispute to build another large warehouse in the Perryman area. I was thoroughly disgusted to see the line of construction workers, though I'm sure they were well-paid, with anti-moratorium signs outside this evening. I'm sure not one of them lives in Perryman, and not one wants a large warehouse in the area where they live. I understand everybody needs a job, but I've watched construction on ninety-five for twenty-one years while living in Hartford County, so work is more than available. To the developers, I just pray for your conscience, because what I heard is my temporary job is more important than your permanent home. Thank you, Councilman Bula, for the information about the new bill that has passed in regards to height monitoring. I would like to see the Perryman Peninsula get some sort of money in the upcoming FY-23 budget for beautification and development. On another note, I'm here again to request for you all to offer some sort of town hall where we can have respectful interactions and get answers to our questions. Though I appreciate the ability to come here and voice my opinion, a one-sided conversation is not truly a conversation. What I continue to hear is that we will have public meetings. There are many opportunities outside of photo ops and grand openings, where you all can come in and speak with the constituents who are not politically aware or have questions. Your interactions matter. We have heard you all say that you hear us, but we have not seen any action. A council member's job description includes enacting public laws and health and safety. This warehouse situation is a health and safety concern, not just for Perryman residents, but for all of us who would like to see our community enjoy a good quality of life. I just wanted to bring that up in case you forgot. And if you have any extra people that need jobs, even the construction workers, I've interviewed thirty-five people in the last month and have not hired one. I have seventeen openings. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Melinda McGuire, Perryman, Maryland. First off, I would like to let you know that I represent five parcels of property. My family and myself and extended family have property down in Perryman. Some of the property has been in the family since World War II, so there are owners, we've been down there since almost eighty years, not myself, but family members have owned property actually in Perryman, and some of the property is adjacent to the Mitchell property. I wanted to talk about the master plan that Mr. Glassman discussed. Back in two thousand one, it was September fourth, two thousand one, the Baltimore Sun reported on the Perryman and how the warehouses were being built and whatever, the problems that we were having at the time. I'd like to turn back the clock to two thousand one and read this to you. "Herein lies the Perryman problem for the county, state, and community. The state can't afford the roads," which would cost at least a hundred and fifty million, that was over twenty years ago, "to accommodate the scale of growth. The residents and county planners agree no one wants to see the land lost under the crush of tractor trailers and supersized warehouses." This is over twenty years ago. "The county planning department and state transportation officials worked together last fall on a Perryman transportation study. What they found," said Don Hoggigan of the State Department of Transportation, "were some solutions that were too expensive for us to commit to." And Fred Ward went on to say, "We are just part of the process." And, and that was Betty Pierce's brother, Frederick Mitchell, and he was sixty-eight at the time. So turn the year, twenty years later, I guess Fred's eighty-eight. "We're trying to do what's proper. Our intent is Perryman will be a nice place to live." Now, twenty years ago, we're twenty years forward, here we are. I don't see any roads improved, I've been down there a long time, and apparently, the studies, somehow magically they got fixed. I don't know how that happened, but something to think about. Also, I wanted to talk about the flyer that came out. "I am a resident and a landowner in Perryman. What the Craig Company developers put out said that we were bullying you guys. I thought this was a democracy, and I thought that we had a right to express ourselves and let you know our concerns. But apparently, according to the Perryman project that the Craig developer put out, they're saying we're bullying you guys, and that's not our intent. Our intent is to protect our property that we worked really hard for, and no, we're not a millionaires, and Fred War-, Fred Mitchell-"
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
Please vote yes, give us some time, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Laura Anderson, followed by Emma Peller.
Correction, Lauren Anderson. Address is thirty-one eleven Hunter Mill Road, Whitehall, Maryland. Jobs. Per the developer, so not my estimation, the proposed project will provide approximately one thousand-plus jobs. Little vague, but even so, yes, at a quick glance, one thousand jobs sound great, right? But what the developers strategically left out in their flyer was the size of the project. Five-point-two million square feet of freight distribution centers. So, okay, not so hard math, divide five-point-two million square feet by a thousand jobs, and that's one job per five thousand two hundred square feet. What is the size of your house? And don't include the levels of your house, just the perimeter, the footprint of your house. How many of your houses and people living under your roof can fit into five thousand two hundred square feet? To further put this into perspective, the Abandonan Wegmans grocery store is one hundred twenty-two thousand square feet. You can quite literally fit forty-two-point-six-two Wegmans in the footprint of the proposed distribution center. That's forty-two Wegmans. The Abandonan Wegman has a, provides one hundred and seventy full-time employees, which doesn't sound initially like a lot, but when you compare the two areas, the Wegman provides seven times more jobs than the proposed distribution warehouse center. So, does one thousand jobs per five-point-two million square feet sound great now? From a business perspective, does it sound like a great selling point? Risk-reward ratio is a phrase often used in all facets of business to compare, compare the potential profit of a trade to potential loss. Is the risk-reward ratio of churning seven hundred acres of pervious area, which overlays a parcel of land providing drinking water to up to thirty percent of Hartford County, which is approximately ninety thousand residents, into impervious area worth the risk? Is an ambiguous one thousand jobs that haven't been created yet, that's just a number, I don't know how you can kill jobs that haven't been created yet, worth the risk of polluting ninety thousand residents' clean drinking water? I respect property owner rights, and with all due, but with all due respect to you, you do not own the water, you do not own the air. Let's provide jobs, but let's do it in such that we get the most bane for our buck. Low risk and high benefits. Please vote for Bill twenty-two oh oh three.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Emma Peller, Bel Air, my address is on file. Hello, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I left my teal hat at home, but I am here to ask you again to vote to pass Bill twenty-two dash zero, zero, three. My mother and grandmother have always told me that when you resort to name-calling and bullying, you've already lost. If that's true, that is unfortunate for the so-called Perryman Improvement Project and Chesapeake Real Estate Group. To that group, this is my message. Sending texts and postcards to instill fear about a moratorium that many citizens support is not a good look. This is yet another example of developers doing what they want without a care about us, the citizens of this county. They have more money than we do, maybe more resources and more connections, but we, the Protect Perryman Peninsula group, have what they do not: passion and the support of the citizens who will be affected. This is why we need you, as the council, to stand for us, to put people over profits, to support those who live here and vote for you and who you are supposed to represent, not just those who pay you. I also wanted to take a moment to talk about an argument I've heard a lot recently, that the area has been zoned this way for twenty-five years, or that the water will be safe based on the twenty-two-year-old environmental impact study. I just wanted to remind everyone that a lot has changed in those twenty-two-plus years. Who would have seen these mega warehouse complexes with millions of square feet then? Who can say that the watershed has not changed in that time? If nothing would have changed in those twenty-two-plus years, I would not be standing here in front of you today. Twenty-two years is a long time, so it deserves a second look. It deserves time to get it right, it deserves a moratorium. That is why you must vote yes on Bill twenty-two zero, zero, three. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Shelley Nizan, followed by Terry Anderson.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Before I start, I wanted to ask for thoughts and prayers for our good friends Greg and Janine LeCorre. Greg is recovering from a back injury, and also Nora and Glenn Dutter aren't here, they usually greet us as the door, and- And Glenn is also recovering from an injury. So certainly keeping them in our thoughts and prayers. I live at eighteen-twelve Park Beach Drive, and I've lived there for twenty-four very happy years. I wrote a poem, and it's called "Protect Perryman." Another Tuesday night, and here we are, fighting for what's right against what has gone too far. To sell your land is a right that should be. However, this plan makes no sense to me. There must be a better way to leave a legacy for the Bush River, for the bay, for the ecosystem especially. When the last field is paved and the final well unused, land we should have saved will be so-called improved. Let's use common sense. Let's examine the plan. A project this immense is so crazy, man. We respectfully ask for your helping hand because it's quite a task to save precious Perryman.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President. Sorry, got ahead of myself.
I'm not saying anything.
Terry Anderson, sixteen thirty-eight Perryman Road. For the past thirteen years, my commute to work has taken me from Perryman to Route forty all the way down five forty-three to Forest Hill. The ninety-five interchange in Bell Camp has become a logistical nightmare. Every day, I see cars and trucks exiting ninety-five blocking all lanes of traffic as they try to get over to turn left on Route seven. This area is already burdened with more traffic than it can handle. Add to that that new townhouse complex, the Royal Farms Store, and the Mitchell Project, and you have a recipe for disaster. Another example of this is the Spasudia-Perryman intersection. Did you know that there are fourteen different directions that a car or truck can go in? Fourteen. We are paying the price for the "build-it-now, infrastructure-lately" mentality. How can these roads handle any more traffic? These issues need to be addressed now before any more building is done. It has been written that our group is anti-business. Well, nothing could be further from the truth. Many people in this group own and operate their businesses right here in Hartford County. We are the ones who go out to eat here, go to church here, grocery shop here, go to the farmers' markets and First Fridays. We hike the trails in our parks, kayak on the rivers and creeks, and volunteer our time to better our community. There was just an article written about the groundbreaking for a low-income housing project stating that it was for the warehouse workers. What does that say about the pay for these warehouse workers? These workers are mostly people who live outside of Hartford County. They work their shifts and return to their homes in Cecil County, Baltimore County, and Pennsylvania. There was also a discussion about seeing things in black and white. You miss too much if you do that. Life is meant to be seen in color. The greens of the grass and trees, the blues of the sky, shades of brown, from a family of deer grazing in the fields, and most of all, a beautiful sunset. It is interesting to see that when faced with a truth, which path one might take. Some of us have decided to take the high road, while others have chosen the low. Don't let black and white be the only things that we see. No more asphalt, no more concrete, no more trucks, and no more warehouses.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this meeting will be adjourned.